Good morning. We have a quorum for today's meeting, so our call to order this meeting. I'll invite the administration and deputations in first.
Today, there are twenty-nine deputations today for this meeting in relation to traffic distribution amongst the three harbour crossings. They will express their views. Some deputations have only written in their views. They have not sent any representatives to come, but we will try to seek views from everyone. And the community may have some comments on the options. So today, we have from the administration, Under-Secretary Mr. Yao Xingmu and Mr. Patrick Chan, Deputy Secretary for Transport and Housing, and Mr. Anthony Lu, Assistant Commissioner for Transport Department, and Mr. Ten Wai-Lung, Chief Engineer from Transport Department, and also from Wilbur Smith Associates Limited, Mr. Michael Clark, and Mr. Billy Wong. Welcome. First, let me welcome deputations and individuals for attending this special meeting of the Transport Panel. This is a public hearing. And if you're ready, you may wish to put on the headset or choose your language on the computer panel in front of you. Channel one is Cantonese, channel two is English. And may I remind you that when you address the panel, you will not be protected by Legislative Council, Parliament Privileges Ordinance, Cap 382. The same applies to your submission, written submissions. And for representatives and individuals, if you haven't forwarded your written submissions, you may do so after the meeting to this panel, so that our members can know more about your views. Now, we have quite a number of deputations today, so each deputation or individual will be given three minutes to speak. If you have already submitted your written comments, you may wish to be more brief and concise without repeating the points on your written submission. So I'll invite Mr. Young Ho Wing, Deputy spokesman of Transport Services for the DAB, to speak first.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, in relation to the proposed measures to improve the traffic distribution among the road harbour crossings, our HCs, the following are the views of the DAB. In January this year, in relation to the government's proposal to increase the tolls for the Cross Harbour Tunnel, CHT, and the toll reduction in EHC Eastern Harbour Crossing, we conducted a survey. In general, the administration's proposal was not supported by the community. Instead, the administration should actively consider other alternatives. Of course, we are also concerned that after adjusting the tolls for EHC, some of the drivers will be diverted to use that tunnel. But while implementing the proposal, the administration should review comprehensively whether the HC has sufficient capacity to take up the diverted traffic from CHT and whether, under this proposal, some drivers will be attracted to use CHT in the hope that the traffic congestion has been relieved. And under such circumstances, traffic congestion may still continue. And we think that there should be a set of indicators to assess the effectiveness of the programme, of the scheme, so as to minimize the impact. And when considering the government's proposal, the administration should also improve supporting measures. For example, there should be more auto tolls and more octopus paving system so as to reduce the waiting time for traffic. And some connecting roads should also be improved. For example, to push forward the completion date of the Central Wan Chi Bypass to relieve traffic congestion at both ends of the tunnel. And whatever proposal is introduced, we think the administration should extensively consult the views of the community and the transportation sector to strike a proper balance. In the long run, we think the administration should actively consider the buyback proposal of WHC and extending the franchise so that the administration can implement effective measures to rationalize the toll charging of the three road harbour crossings and to distribute traffic evenly to allow more efficient use of social resources. In relation to population projections and the road use, there should be longer-term planning and there should be a feasibility study on the third and the fourth RHC. Next, Mr. Ho Kin Chung from New People's Party.
Now, option A for the administration's proposal, the private car toll will be increased by five dollars. And for goods vehicles, the increase will amount to some quite substantially. And for buses, the tolls will be increased to thirty-two dollars. It's very unfair. For option B, the tolls will be adjusted according to the existing toll structure equally. It's not effective and not feasible. Option C, that is, not to adjust any tolls for the HC, but the tolls for CHT will be increased by some thirty to fifty percent. And for goods vehicle, it will be increased by some four to eight dollars. For HC, it will be reduced by some fifteen to thirty dollars. It's more effective. For the tolls for CHT will be some five dollars more than HC, and it's also time-saving for drivers. But in relation to the consultation on the traffic distribution among the RHCs, the government should also think about option D, apart from options A to C. That is, to enhance option C. As for taxis, for EHC, the toll should only be increased by three dollars. And because taxi occupies the same space as private cars, it should be treated equally as private cars. So under option C, the CHT tolls will be increased for taxis by three to thirteen dollars. For EHC, it will be charged at fifteen dollars. Now, for CHT, the tolls are charged to the user-pay principle. There is no burden to be taken up by drivers. For CHT, for taxi, it's charged at ten dollars plus ten dollars return trip fare. So after adjustment, it will just be a few dollars more. For passengers, it may only be a small amount for them. For taxis, for EHT, it's proposed that the tolls will be reduced by ten dollars. And for those travelling to Kowloon East by taxi, this will provide an incentive for them to use CHT. For CHT, it's situated at a central location, and it's very convenient. It cannot be replaced unless the tolls are increased substantially. It will not change the driver's habits. So in the long run, the government should consider constructing the fourth RHC to relieve the traffic congestion at CHT. Next, Mr. Stanley Chang from Lok Ma Chau China Hong Kong Freight Association.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, I don't see how the proposals in this so-called expert's report can relieve the traffic congestion of CHT. But the tolls on large goods vehicles will be very substantial, whereas for smaller vehicles or private cars, the impact is minimal. I don't think drivers would choose the longer journey, and that is to take the EHC just to save a few dollars. And the proposed toll increase, which aims at diverting goods vehicles to take EHC, it's not practical. Now, for the diesel tanks of goods vehicles, they can only run for two kilometers more. Well, say, if we go from Kowloon Bay to, if we take the EHC from Kwai Cheong, it will take ten kilometers more for our journeys. So it's not environmental-friendly, because we're talking about reducing emission. And if goods vehicles are forced to take the HC, it's not practical. I think the proposal has not totally gauged the mindset of drivers. And the administration doesn't understand that for our transportation sector, the cars can be transferred in full to consumers. And sometimes, we have no alternative but to take the CHT, because our clients require us to take the CHT. The CHT tolls is just for fifty to sixty dollars, but for Western Harbour Crossing, it's over a hundred dollars. It's closer to two hundred dollars. So if you take WHC, our clients would ask us to pay for the tolls ourselves. So I think in order to improve the distribution among the three RHCs, you should standardize the tolls. We don't mind. If the RHC's tolls are to be standardized, then the tolls for goods vehicles would go up, but we don't mind that. Well, and from the report, we can see that there are over twenty bridges and other road systems in Shanghai where tolls are required. So I don't think the situation at CHT would improve by implementing the measures. Now, it's just two years away from the expiry of the HC franchise, so we should wait for two years more and see how the administration would handle this.
Next, Mr. Wong Po Keung, Hong Kong Taxi Owners Association. Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and honourable members. I'm Wong Po Keung, representing the Taxi Owners Association. Our association believes that the tolls for taxis crossing the harbour should be such that both, should be easily understandable to both drivers and passengers. Whether the taxi is carrying passengers or not, the same toll will be charged. If the tolls for the three cross harbour tunnels are not the same, there will be disputes between drivers and passengers. So I think the charge for the three tunnels should be standardized. There should be a single charge of twenty dollars per trip, and passengers will have to pay for the tolls for the return trip as well. Whereas a single charge will be levy for passengers who take taxis, you know, who stipulated that they are crossing the harbour. So if there's no other choice and given the three options, then we would prefer option C. Next, we have Mr. Aaron Ng from Taiwo Motors Limited.
Thank you. I think the charges for taxis crossing harbour is paid by the passengers. As far as diverting the traffic from CHT, if the charges for the three tunnels were standardized, the passengers obviously would choose the shortest tunnel, which means the shortest and the most convenient route. And then the number of vehicles crossing the three tunnels will be more even. But I don't think we've done that at the moment. But in our opinion at the moment, given the three options, option C is more feasible.
Next, Mr. Wan Cheung Ling, the Kowloon Taxi Owners Association. Thank you, and good morning. For urban taxis, as drivers, we don't decide which tunnel we should use. It's up to the passengers. The passengers will make the decision based on the amount of time required for the trip and the taxis. If there are no passengers, then the driver will decide which tunnel to use. Normally, the driver would prefer to use the most cost-effective or the fastest method to cross harbour. But you look at the three tunnels. Only the EHT provides a concession for taxi drivers and only charges fifteen dollars if the taxi doesn't carry any passengers crossing the tunnel. And therefore, taxi drivers would tend not to use CHT and offer the EHT as well. The Western Harbour Crossing provides for a special concession, but that only applies after midnight. They give a concession to taxi drivers because there would be no vehicles using that tunnel, and therefore, the tunnel is very welcomed by taxi drivers if the toll is only ten dollars per trip and a five-dollar coupon is given to the taxi driver. So taxi drivers really welcome, would like to use the WHC. Among the three tunnels, we would like the government to buy back the WHT, and we also support option C. Thank you. Next, Mr. Alan Chan.
Thank you. We believe that the traffic congestion in the three tunnels is mainly because the business district is centralized on Hong Kong Island. So I don't think we should concern about the tolls for the short term. Looking at the figures, there are a lot of people working and need to go to a different district for work. In Kowloon, we have more than two hundred thousand people need to cross the harbour to work. For people living in the NT, seven hundred eighty, seven thousand nine hundred forty-five people need to travel to Hong Kong Island to work, of which more than three hundred works in Hong Kong Island. So for people living in Kowloon and the NT, about more than half a million people must cross the harbour to work on Hong Kong side. So we have to find out what is the root cause of the congestion. Basically, it's due to the fact that people need to travel to a different district to work. For those, because we don't have sufficient employment opportunities in Kowloon and the NT, as a result, a massive number of people need to go to Hong Kong Island for work. The government will need to adopt, will need to find a fundamental solution to the problem rather than simply adjusting the tolls for the three tunnels. I propose that we should decentralize the commercial districts. But that should be what the government should consider at the long term, in terms of planning. For the trade itself, since we, if you look at the basic figures, in Kowloon, we have two hundred odd thousand in NT, seven hundred ninety thousand people need to, you know, go to a different territory to work, more than half a million of which work on Hong Kong Island. This is a basic fact. For commercial vehicles, this is a reality that can't change. There is a basic transportation demand every day, which cannot be changed. And because of that, we propose that the charges for commercial vehicles should not be adjusted. For commercial vehicles, the consumption pattern depends on the consumer's transportation demand, which is not very elastic. It will not be affected by the adjustment of the tolls. For commercial vehicles, if the tolls for the three tunnels were adjusted, it would directly affect the operator. For the commercial vehicles, it simply doesn't work. As I give, based on the figures I quoted just now, more than half a million people's transportation demand is that they need to cross harbour on Hong Kong Island. And the situation is even more serious because the government originally had not planned to locate the central government offices in Amity rather than in Kai Tak. Mr. Tam from Green Sense. I think the congestion in our three cross harbour tunnels, in order to resolve the problem, I don't think the WHC should be absent from the discussion today. So what is the price we need to pay if we do not deal with the congestion at CHT? Right now, a new road will be built. It's called the Central Kowloon, you know, trunk road. And the provision for that is twenty to thirty million dollars. We need to build this Central Kowloon, you know, trunk road because the east, in the south of Kowloon is congested with vehicles which need to cross the tunnel through CHT. If you want to use CHT, you need to, at a flood, the congestion along the Flyovers and Gascon Road and so on. I think would come from, the vehicles come from two sides, Kowloon East and Kowloon West, and these vehicles want to cross the harbour. It's a very serious problem. Originally, the Flyover at Gascon Road or the Chitlamro South Flyover is not, were not that congested and you don't need to build a Central Kowloon trunk road. And we need to pay a heavy price to build that road. Previously, we were not aware of this, but recently, the government has been telling us that there's too much public fuel materials, and then we need to reclaim, we go for reclamation. So the fuel materials created will be two point seven million cubic meters arising from the building of that Central Kowloon trunk road. It can fill up about three hundred and twenty swimming pools. If you want to build a tunnel from Kai Tak to West Kowloon, eventually, it will create that much amount of fuel materials. And it will create excuse for the Development Bureau to propose reclamation. And we're talking about public expenditure of twenty to thirty million dollars. Why spend so much money on these projects and creating so much environmental problems? And then there will need to be a road diversion, there will be pollution, and the money could otherwise be spent on, you know, universal retirement. There is no need for a filibuster. Well, the congestion at the CHT and the environmental, social, economic cost, which it entails, is so much that we need to build a Central Kowloon trunk road to compensate for that. I don't think we need to build that trunk road. Honourable members, tomorrow, the report on the EIA for that trunk road will be published. Although the system is not perfect, I'd like you to tell the government before deadline tomorrow that we don't need to build that Central Kowloon trunk road so long as Ms. Yao Xingmu, Under-Secretary, can resolve the traffic congestion problem at CHT and find a way to, so that we can make more optimal use of WHT. Because a lot of traffic now, you know, have to turn into Gascon Road and then towards CHT causing congestion. We don't want to wait until 2023 when the WCHC's concession will end. By which time, I'll be forty-three years old, and many of you are retired already.
I'm Ng Yip Poi, representing the taxi drivers' operators. I only speak on behalf of the taxi drivers. I think that the tolls for the three tunnels should be twenty dollars each. Ten dollars is too cheap. I think it should be, there should be a flat charge for twenty dollars per trip, so that we don't have to explain to the drivers why we charge them, you know, fifty dollars plus fifteen dollars. For, take the EHT, for example, it's twenty-five plus fifteen dollars. The passengers are confused and always ask. I explain to them, just look at the yellow notice. And some people from the mainland, they may not be literate. Whatever you say, they will say they don't understand. It would be better that we standardize the charge for taxis. I think for taxis, there should be a standard toll of twenty dollars for all the three tunnels. And all taxi drivers are in favour of this. A flat charge of twenty dollars, so we don't need to refer to the notice, we don't need to explain, and people can easily understand. Thank you.
Ms. Ah Yung Kan, thank you. And honourable members, good morning. I represent the United Friendship Taxi Owners and Drivers Association. The government proposed measures to improve traffic distribution among the road harbour crossings, and we would like to make the following submissions. Right now, there are only three tunnels connecting Kowloon and Hong Kong, including playing a very important role. But in the long, for a long time, the traffic flow among the three tunnels are uneven. In the past, for major infrastructure projects, the government tended to rely on the market and allow the operators to build and operate the tunnels, and they are free to set the charges. As a result, the CHT is now oversaturated and there's a lot of traffic congestion in its vicinity. We cannot estimate the economic damages that it's caused. Take the taxi trade, for example. Because of the congestion, passengers would not like to take taxis, and they would opt for other mode of transport. Instead, as a result, our business would suffer. Over the last, for many years, we have proposed that, to the government, that, given that he has such a large amount of reserves, we asked the government to buy back the two cross harbour tunnels and to lower the toll for the WHC so that we can equalize the traffic among the three tunnels so that congestion could be relieved. I hope that the new administration under C Y Leng will honor his pledge, that is, anything related to public issue, livelihood is no small issue. He should try to improve the traffic situation. We are in support of option C. And I think the government, we think the government should start building the fourth cross harbour tunnel. Thank you. Next, Mr. Yu Yihin Pei.
Good morning. I'm concerned about air pollution brought about by traffic congestion. As we all know, traffic congestion will create a serious air pollution problem. So if the traffic congestion at CHT can be relieved, it will be more effective in combating air pollution than the idling engine law. Now, in relation to the toll adjustments, WHC is not included in this proposal. So if traffic is diverted from CHT to WHC, there is a concern that the traffic congestion in Central would be even more serious. But my question is, what's the purpose of building the WHC? It has such a low utilization rate and that now traffic cannot be diverted from CHT to WHC. So what's the purpose of its existence? The other point is, in other countries, now, the toll charging could be, or the toll levels could be pegged to the number of passengers inside the vehicles. I think the administration could consider this point coupled with other environmental protection policies. Now, during rush hours, very often in the private car, you see only one or two passengers inside, but this will greatly increase the number of vehicles on the road. So if we have measures like pegging the toll levels to the number of passengers inside inversely, so that with more passengers, you pay a lower level of tolls, this will give an incentive to reduce traffic flow as well as providing a concession to drivers and passengers. So much for me. Thank you. Next, Mr. Dominic Lee.
Now, it's a longstanding problem that we see traffic congestion at CHT, but so far, the administration has not come up with anything to divert the traffic from CHT to the two other tunnels. Now, about the three toll adjustment options, they put up all the big words like resource management principle and toll increase for one and toll reduction for the other.
principle and toll increase for one and toll reduction for the other. But in fact, the whole point is about increasing toll for C H T so that it's higher than the tolls for C H C. Under the current proposal, now, drivers need to pay more, but then there will still be traffic congestion. The queue, traffic queues at C H T could only be reduced by thirty to forty percent. Traffic diversion is not very effective, and it's still doubtful whether the thirty to forty percent reduction could be achieved. In fact, the administration has tried this old trick before, but it's proven to be ineffective. In nineteen ninety-nine, for private cars toll, tolls, for C H T tolls for private cars, it was increased from ten to twenty dollars. But at that time, it was five dollars more than the H C. And the immediate effect was, it seems, the traffic flow was reduced, but very soon the traffic flow at C H T resumed to over one hundred and twenty thousand. So for this proposal, it's only a difference of five dollars in terms of the toll for C H T and H C. And it may provide a great incentive for private cars U H C. But let's say if the private car wishes to travel to New Territories West or Kowloon Central, the fuel costs may increase. Now, it's standing at seventeen dollars per liter. So how many drivers would actually use C H C? For professional drivers, it's not attractive either, especially for heavy goods vehicles traveling to and from Kwai Cheong and North West, New Territories West. They need to travel farther and they might need to transfer the costs onto consumers. So we don't think the three options are viable. We think that the problem should be tackled at source. In twenty sixteen, the franchise for H C will be, will expire, and we can then buy back the tunnel and together with the completion of Central Wan Chi Bypass, an agreement could be reached to lower the tolls for W H C so that the traffic congestion at C H T could really be addressed. Next, Mr. Joshua Lee from Three Party. We think the three options cannot achieve its goal. Option A will cause some wide repercussions among the professional drivers. For the remaining two options, the adjustment level might not be substantial, but transport cars is part of our living cars, and we think that options, only option A and option C could meet the target of traffic queue reduction. Now, say, on a daily basis, the throughput is one hundred and eighteen thousand, then under option B, there will still be traffic congestion. And even for options A and C, there is still a similar level of traffic flow, so it cannot really relieve the traffic. So our concern for option C, which is status quo for public transport option, is that during rush hours, the H C will be as congested as C H T according to the consultant. During peak hours, there will be an increase of six thousand, more than six thousand trips. So the traffic congestion could be equivalent to C H T or even worse. The report has not taken into account other factors. For example, the commercial development or business development in Kowloon East and other newly developed residential sites and the increase in transport, increase in traffic flow, thereby, they have not been taken into account. Now, the option will cause more traffic congestion at the H C. The, according to the report, W H C is not included in this proposal because the connecting roads cannot, do not have sufficient capacity to take up the increased traffic. Now, with a throughput of one, one hundred and ten thousand trips, I don't understand why the connecting roads do not have sufficient capacity to take up the increased traffic in W H C. The administration would like to adjust the tolls for H C and C H T to relieve traffic congestion at C H T. However, the H C's capacity has almost saturated. It has reached ninety percent, so it will only cause even more serious traffic congestion at H C and for C H T because of its prime location. I think some drivers would still use C H T despite the toll increase. So it's questionable whether this option can really improve traffic. This will only induce traffic congestion at H C. So the administration should study the proposal to improve the traffic between the three, our H C. I'll invite Mr. Kwak Winkin to speak first. Morning, I am Kwak Winkin from Labor the Party, from Labor Party. The traffic congestion at the C H T is a longstanding problem in Hong Kong. That should, it should be addressed. It's a waste of passengers' time and it will also produce more vehicle emission. The major source of air pollution in Hong Kong is roadside emission. According to the study, the higher the speed of the vehicle is, the lower the level of emission. So relieving traffic congestion will improve air quality and citizens' health. But therefore, addressing transportation issues is also important in maintaining public health. And we think that the traffic flow should be reduced apart from relieving traffic congestion so as to improve the situation that I mentioned. About the traffic distribution proposals or redistribution proposals, the most viable option should be one with the shortest distance. And the government should adjust the toll structures for C H T and H C so that some drivers who might originally opted for H C, but because of the price differentials, are opted for C H C would be diverted back to H C. Now, we think that although it's not mentioned in the consultation report, there are other adjustments needed to be made. For example, for the line rock tunnel in Sha Tin, many drivers opt for line rock tunnel because it's cheaper. And then after going, after using the line rock tunnel, those traveling from Sha Tin to Central would use C H T. So there should be some form of combined concession so that the journey could be shortened. And if toll adjustments are to be made, it should target private cars. If you look at this statistics, during rush hours, private car accounts for forty to sixty percent of the total traffic flow. This is for the morning time, for the evening, it's over fifty to seventy percent. And private cars or passengers of private cars could opt for public transport. But for professional drivers, it's difficult for them to switch to other modes of transport. It will only increase their costs. So the toll adjustment should target private cars, and there should be minimum impact on professional drivers. And electronic toll system should be adopted to effectively control traffic flow to, in order to address the problems I mentioned. Next, Mr. Chairman Hong. Thank you. Chairman, now Democratic Party, I mean, the D A B party is so-called the ruling party. And I'd like to know from the chairman the stance of the D A B, since the spokesman for D A B just now opposed all three options. So what is the effective measure in improving road congestion and traffic distribution among the tunnels? I'd like chairman to say more on that. I don't understand whether they opt for buying back the tunnel or extending the franchise because these two things are different. I hope that the more, a clearer position could be expressed. So coming back to my comment on this paper, I'd like the administration to give me more information on the medium to long-term proposals. In twenty sixteen, the beauty contract would expire. And I, my question is whether the administration would consider a toll agreement with them or whether there'll be a buyback of the W H C followed by an agreement? Because the crux of the paper is that the, the proposal will not be implemented until the end of twenty fourteen. And the H C franchise will expire in twenty sixteen, so it's just about a year away. And nothing much can be done. So we should think in the longer term, in twenty sixteen, shouldn't there be an agreement with W H C? Should the government buy back the tunnel? I hope the administration could clarify this point. Everyone here might be opting for option C, but there is a concern. And that is, it is subsidizing public transport, but at the same time, it has not put in any safeguard measure to stop public transport companies from increasing their fares. I mean, franchise bus companies could still apply for fair increase. This is what the administration should clarify. And the toll adjustment should not result in any increase in profit in the public transport companies. So whether you want to implement it by the end of next year or after twenty sixteen, there are still other proposals to consider. For example, smart system for buses so that more information could be provided to passengers who are waiting for buses. And next is Wan Chi Reclamation Area. And the fourth tunnel could be considered. Then the direction could be similar to the C H T.
Ms. Leung Kong Yew, thank you. Of the three proposals to relieve congestion in, in the three tunnels, we support option A because it can narrow the difference between the tolls for the E X T and the C X T and can achieve the policy objective to divert traffic from C X T to E X T. Other than that, we also like to make two other proposals. First of all, we think that the administration should, I mean, for the franchise bus, transfer operators, basically bus companies, I think they should only be charged a token fee. For the franchise buses, the routes, the timetables are all regulated by the government. So even if the tolls were reduced, it would not increase the, the traffic flow. And if the toll charges for all the tunnels, if we only charge a token fee of five dollars for the buses, in, for a whole year, and you take all, add all the bus companies together, they will be paying four hundred and seventy million dollars less in terms of toll charges. For the four hundred and seventy million dollars, if they were subsidized by the government, if the, if the reduction, and if the four hundred and seventy million dollars were spent on, to, to help lower the, the, the toll increase of bus companies. I mean, right now, traveling from North West N T to Hong Kong costs twenty-two dollars, then the fare could be reduced by forty-five dollars. That token charge, I mean, of course, if the government were to manage the tunnels, it will be simpler. But for private tunnels, it will, it will, it will require the administration to reach an agreement with the operator. And, I mean, and I think it should be feasible, like the two proposals to lower fees for the both tunnels. Secondly, we suggest that the government should immediately conduct a comprehensive review on tunnel toll charges so that we can make optimal use of our road services. And we're not just talking about cross-up tunnels. The Two Moon Highway, for example, the traffic flow is very high. The Thailand Tunnel is underutilized. If we could equalize the, the, the flow between the two, it can help better protect the environment and, and and traffic flow will be a lot more smooth. So in the, the framework for the review should be that there should be two charges. For tunnels with a smooth flow of traffic, there should only be a token charge. But for vehicles which are more congested, a higher toll should be charged, and there should be a mechanism to, for people to, to switch from one to the other. Next, Mr. Tan, thank you.
Good morning. I represent the Public Transport Ting Tang. The government is willing to resolve this public livelihood issue, and we welcome that. But regarding proposal to increase the tolls for C X T and lower the, the, the toll for E X T, I wouldn't say it would not work, but will it really resolve the problem? I like, I also like to talk about the, 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 the impact of the congestion on the tunnels on the traffic situation. Right now, is the buses, mini buses and taxis using the, the cross-up tunnels. And to some extent, they are affected by the traffic congestion at C H T. Take the C H T, for example, if you take the C H T when there is congestion, the, the delay could be up to thirty minutes. Take Bus One O One, for example, the frequency is one bus per, every three minutes from Kuntong to Kennedy. The trip is sixty-five minutes officially. But if the bus needs to cover so many bus stops, does it really, can you finish your trip in sixty-five minutes? I, I mean, I've, I've taken, I've taken a bus myself and it costs, it took me one hour and forty minutes. So I think this would create a vicious circle for the C H T. Also, you always claim that you want to improve air quality and then because of the traffic congestion and then you have to deploy so many buses to, so if really improving upon the situation in the C H T, a serious problem exists. For example, buses using W H T will, will, will cost more than a hundred dollars. And then if the overnight tunnel buses are using C H T, it's not convenient. In the end, it was scrap, and in the end, the passengers are those who suffer. For mini buses, they only carry sixteen passengers, the revenue is rather limited. If the toll charge were increased, if the charge for the C X T is increased, then the, the increasing cost will be shifted on the consumers. In the end, the business will not be viable. Take the, take the W H T, you've traveled from Moncock to Western, it's cost forty dollars, mini buses, fifty-five dollars. If they carry sixteen passengers, the, the income is two hundred dollars, toll is fifty-five dollars, extra revenue a hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So it takes up twenty-five point five percent of the total cost, I mean, the toll in terms of the operating cost of the mini buses. For taxis, if they increase the fares, there will be fewer passengers. And in the end, I mean, for, for, for private cars, if you increase the toll by only five dollars, it doesn't really, it would not be very effective. You encourage people to use public transport, but then you're not encouraging the private, drivers of private cars to opt for public transport. So there should be a standard charge. In the long term, it doesn't work if you increase the toll for C X T and E X T. In the end, you should standardize charges. And then you should increase the fares, the tolls for private cars and not the commercial vehicles. Next, Mr. Leung Yik Hung, thank you. First of all, of the three proposed options, I believe only option C is acceptable. For options A and B, they will not really seriously affect the, the public transportation industry, including the bus companies and the transportation industry, including buses, trucks and taxis. Option C would have the least impact. As far as helping to relieve congestion, I think option C will be the most effective. And secondly, going back to a bit of history, in nineteen eighty-eight, the Transit Department had responded to questions for electric members, and the Transit Department indicated that for the E X T, the, the issue is really fully saturated and there's no way for it to help relieve congestion at C H T. If we go, go back to twenty twelve and the traffic flow in twenty twelve and, 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 and with that period, the, the difference in the number of vehicles is only two hundred. If the government at the time believed that the E X T cannot help relieve traffic congestion at C H T, why is it the government now believes that the E X T has the ability to help relieve the pressure on the C H T? That is really doubtful. And thirdly, for the, take the W T, for example, over the last ten years, the traffic flow has jumped sixty percent because of the growing population living in the N T West and also some traffic diverted from C H T.
because of the growing population living in the NT West and also some drivers diverted from CHT and which now use the WHT. Which means that some drivers already, you know, shifted changing from using the CHT to WHC. So even if the government doesn't increase the tolls for CHT and cut the tolls for EHT, people who volunteer to opt for the WHT and if this trend continues, so even if without these proposed measures by the administration, the situation will naturally, you know, change. And fourthly, for in, after the EHT increases toll in 2005, its traffic flow had drastically dropped for some time. But at the time, there was no significant increase in the traffic flow at CHT. What is more worrying is that starting from 2009, the traffic flow in EHT started to go up continuously, which means that people who use the EHT already adapted to the increase in the toll charges. And also that there's a physical distance between the EHT and the CHT. Given expensive fuel charges, the drivers will not use the CHT. Bear in mind, the additional mileage would need to be driven. So basically, we are reservations about the proposal to increase the tolls for CHT and cut the toll for the EHT. Thank you. The Public Omnibus Operators Association represents 7% of the vehicle operators, more than 4,000 in total. We object to options A and B because they will drastically increase the, our costs, the cost for vehicles which need to cross the harbor. We really suspect that the government and the consultants, whether they have the will to really resolve the problem. The government is putting forward a financial, you know, initiative to improve on the traffic situation. Recently, with the exception of 997, where the WHC was commissioned and also the improvement in road network. Other than that, the government has not made any other adjustments or built new roads to relieve traffic, the traffic situation. Over the last 10 odd years, the government and the consultants had recommended once the adoption of electronic road pricing or measures to control traffic flow. But in the end, there was, there was no, nothing was done in the end. Coming back to this report and the document, the trade believe that only option C would have the least impact on the public transport operators in the long term. But in terms of actual operation, it would not help as far as, because according to the consultant's report, the time required for cross harbor trips, even though some of the vehicles will be diverted to the EHT, the report also tells us that some of the drivers using the WC will then indirectly opt for the CHT instead because the cost is lower. And because of the relief in the congestion in CHT, there would be incentive for people to, you know, switch from using the WHT to the CHT. And then the congestion will continue. Over the last few years, if we look at the data provided by the Transit Department, we have observed that, back pardon, overall cross harbor traffic, 45% comprises private vehicles. In other words, looking at the record of registered vehicles, about 1,350 to 1,900 odd vehicles will go back to using the CHT. And it will not help us in terms of the journey time. It will also create the wrong impression for our passengers, which is that the tunnel situation has improved, why is it still so congested? In the end, it will adversely affect our turnover. Passengers will not, you know, use our vehicles. Next, Mr. Chen Chi-Tak, thank you.
The, we are in favor of option C. We are the Hong Kong District Tourists and Passengers Omnibus Operators Association. Well, this proposal suggests that there should be, you know, different charges at different times of the day. We can, we can, so other than the fixed charge or toll, the standard toll, there would be a surcharge for using the toll during the peak hours. We hope that we can, we hope that this proposal could be used to adjust the traffic flow among the three tunnels. And when the public uses the, use the tunnel, they would adjust, change the driving pattern in the light of the adjusted tolls. Mr. Yip.
I represent the Tung Man Bus Operators Association. Of the three models, we believe that only option C is viable. Overall, we still believe that for the three tunnels, the report only points out that you want to use two tunnels to do the job of three. Many of our members were asked why you can't do something about the WHC so that you can attract our members to use that tunnel. Many of our, many of members of public have given the comments regarding the WC. The crucial point is that the other two tunnels are already saturated. As to how we can do it, take taxis, for example. I myself have also used the WC and the concessions really attract drivers to use that tunnel. I hope the Transit Department will understand this. So can you work along this direction and and encourage the lights goods vehicles, for example? They actually like goods vehicles. They make up a large number of the vehicles using the tunnel. And they are pretty difficult choice. Can they, you know, pay for the time safe? I'm sure they are willing to do that. Like taxis, they're willing to pay for the time safe. They are willing to pay more. Over the years, for members of public who use the crosshopper tunnel, were you willing to pay money for the time safe? You may say that when they got reached the other side of the harbor, there would still be congestion. That would depend for us listening to the public broadcast. I don't think the government can do anything here. Some members of public said, for example, that you need to widen the Tung Man Highway. There's traffic accidents every day when it rains. And we also use that highway. We are the users. As a member of public, we hope that the new administration can really, you know, you know, understand the difficulties we face in our operations. Are you engaged an expert to come up with such a report? I think it's a waste of money. We all know that the three tunnels, if you don't use one of those and you use two tunnels to do the work of three, it simply doesn't work. Thank you. Ms. Si Wei Ching.
Thank you, Chairman. In 2010, the administration commissioned a consultant to prepare this report. And the proposal is for the CHT tolls to be increased and for each toll to be reduced. And we have three options here. And my fellow colleagues think that option A and option B, both are not viable. Only option C, but they only reluctantly accept option C. So I'd like the administration to explain to the public in case the estimation is wrong. Now, in relation to increase in CHT tolls and reduction in EHT tolls, the, it's not powerful enough. The magnitude is not enough, so I think it's not effective. And I need to put this on record. According to the consultancy record, there will be a reduction in the traffic flow. But it's really questionable whether it will be reduced to such an extent. Now, from Kaohun to Hong Kong, most private cars, I mean, according to the report, the, it's just 1, 2, 3, 1.3. Private cars constitute the largest traffic flow at the CHT. Now, if the toll adjustment is so, of such a slight magnitude, it won't affect private cars. Because in the minds of Hong Kong people, they like to spend money to buy time. So if the amount is just very small, it's totally acceptable to them. So according to this option, this slight increase wouldn't affect them at all. It wouldn't change their mind at all. According to option A, it's not supported. Option B, well, the government needs to fork up money. It's not effective. So we have no alternative, no alternative but to turn to option C. Option C is only viable if WHC cuts the toll. Now, we understand that for traffic coming from Southern District, Aberdeen, Pockfulam, Saiipun, if they need to cross the harbor, they would go to Central first. So if there is a cut in WHC toll, they don't need to travel to Central. They would take WHC. For eastbound traffic situation is the same. For traffic coming down from South Kewan or North Point or Chawan, they would take EHT if tolls are reduced substantially. They don't need to be crammed in Central. So this is what I call tackling the problem at source. So my proposal is for the administration to encourage the general public to take mass transport and also non-franchise bus companies. And also, there should be a bus lane for non-franchise buses, taxis, etc., at the harbor crossings so that people will be encouraged to take public transport. Next. Well, honestly, the three options are not really viable. For EHT, the traffic flow will increase after the reduction and WHC users would be diverted to EHT. So I think that the problem occurring at CHT will be moved to EHT. So by then, we'll need another report on how the traffic congestion at EHT should be addressed. Well, we still have the third tunnel, WHC. So we should have, we should include the third tunnel in formulating plans. We should not just focus on EHT and CHT in order to solve the problem. As a coach operator, I don't think all three, either of the three options could help operators because with longer journeys, we need more fuel and there would be higher cost and more vehicle emission. So if you ask our association, the Kaohun District Tourists and Passengers Omnibus Operators Association, choose, we'll opt for option C. Next, Ms. Susan Chan. The Business and Professionals Federation of Hong Kong supports the administration's toll adjustment proposal in redistributing traffic among the RHC. But we support the government in rolling out initiatives in encouraging the public to support toll charging system on the road. There should be a smart electronic system and it should adhere to the principle of equal use of resources in the community. Well, flexibility should be provided so that under either of the three options, adjustments could be made to accommodate to the circumstances and the traffic flow should be controlled. We support increasing the tolls for CHT. On the other hand, we think the general public should also be given a choice. For some drivers, they are willing to pay more during rush hours for a tunnel that is less congested. But when they're not hurrying, they wouldn't mind waiting longer for using a cheaper tunnel. I think the administration should consider this point. Finally, we hope the administration could take the perspective of public transport management and traffic management in considering the proposals, including franchise bus companies. And there should be different charges for different tunnels. And there should be a bigger difference in terms of toll adjustment for private cars and public transport. Next, Mr. Yong Chi Keng.
Good morning, Chairman. I'm Yong Chi Keng from Hong Kong Automobile Association. Now, according to our survey, most of the drivers and our members choose option A. But traffic flow will increase as a result. So we hope the administration in 10 years' time would consider building another tunnel or a flyover or a bridge to relieve the traffic. The bridge or the tunnel should not be built by the private sector. Next, deputation.
I'd like to differ because in relation to the resource management option, the principle is that it should be, there should be equality. Now, in relation to the toll charges, the costs should be taken into account. This is unfair to users and it will increase the cost of logistics. Now, as for the remaining options, well, the majority rules and I cannot change the habit of commercial drivers. Now, for one of the tunnels, the tolls are way higher than the remaining two. Well, after implementing option A, there is a question whether this could lead to fare increase by bus franchise companies. Now, at present, the fares stand at 15 to 47 and with 120 passengers on board, taking into a cap. Now, taking 50 passengers per bus as example. Now, I'll say 104, bus route 104. Before crossing the harbor, the fare is $9.30. After crossing the tunnel is $5.670. So what's the, well, about the price difference? What is the cost attributed to the tunnel toll? Around $3.6. And for $47 fare of another route, I think it far exceeds the cost for crossing the tunnel. According to the total throughput for EHT in 2012, the total income is 760 million for CHT is 660 million. So if option A is chosen and that 40% of the CHT traffic would go, would be diverted to EHT, because of the increased traffic flow, there would be an increase of 100 million to some 80, $10 billion or so, or $1 billion or so. And for CHT, there would be an increase of 700 million. Over the past three years, over the years, I think the utilization amongst the tunnels have been stable and the increased traffic flow would not induce an increase of expenditure of more than 100 million. So if 40% of the traffic from CHT will be diverted to EHT, according to my calculation, it's, the amount would far go beyond the government's estimate. It will go up to $400 million. And because of the $100 million income together with the government subsidy of $400 million, they will be reaping a big profit. And at the same time, this will amount to an increase in, the increase in toll will be, will amount to increase in tax. And this will give an impression that the public's interest is being sacrificed. Next, deputation. Having read the whole report, this, the three options, this is what I will do. I'm, this is totally rubbish.
I'm, this is totally rubbish. I'm Jackie Lim and uh in um twenty eleven and January twenty eleven, I was talking about the same consultants, uh consultant's report, uh the same consultant's tur- firm. At that time, seven million dollar uh was spent in preparing that report and now the content is just the same. So, Miss Yau Shing Mu, I think you should ask Secretary to come out and explain about the consultancy fee on both occasions. And the Transport Housing Bureau should also declare interest. As mentioned by the two said yips just now, why is it that uh only two tunnels are involved when we have three tunnels in Hong Kong? And uh and and I mentioned that point in twenty eleven very clearly. Now, many of the traffic using C H T should originally use W H C. But now, W H C is not included in the proposal. Does it because the the W H C actually belongs to Mr. Wing Chee Kin, who has affiliation with the top officials in the mainland? I really don't understand. The, this whole report a lot, well, all through the three years, uh kept on saying that H C uh is very useful in addressing this issue, but the journey is thirteen kilometers longer. Uh so far, Mr. Yau Shing Mu, Mu has never explained how the uh increased cost and the longer journey can uh be offset, maybe, but but the, but you can still argue. Is it the case that um many traffic originally should be using W H C has been diverted to C H T? Well, honestly, it's quite impossible to conduct a survey to find this out. So I will make this suggestion. Or let me put it more bluntly, I will uh um invite betting on this. Well, let's see. Well, um now, at the toll booths of C H T, let's set up uh ballot boxes, well, let drivers press a button after paying the tolls. Uh let them vote in order to conduct a survey, while we can get some data um in order to find out which proposals work.
The administration has now heard more than twenty uh submissions from individuals and deputations. Could you now make a response? Under Secretary, thank you. I'd like to thank all the deputations for attending the meeting today and giving us your valuable views. And also told us your thoughts about our proposals and some new suggestions as well. Uh I'll try to make a global response to various concerns raised by the deputations, followed by questions by members. We conducted the, I I think the present recommendation uh by the consultant is actually uh a continuation of the uh, the the same consultancy study. In the light of the last round of consultation, after we've heard the views from members and and deputations and the general public, some of the options proposed the last time, I think we've uh tell, we've now come up with an enon- enhanced version or or also suggested other considerations. So options A and B have been suggested previously. But having heard your views, we decided to also put forward option C to respond to the concerns of the trade or people who uh need to use public transport. And that is why we have option C. The whole study was a part and parcel of the same study. We understand, of course, that any proposal to adjust tolls would uh would result in strong reaction from the public. But according to our calculations and according to common sense and past experience, we have seen that adjusting the tolls will really, you know, work to some uh some extent. For example, in nineteen ninety-nine, the adjustment did actually uh uh bring about some improvement. But since nineteen ninety-nine until the present moment, our economic environment has changed a lot. If you look at the economic growth figures, our GDP figures ha- in the last ten or years, has gone up by more than forty percent. Our inflation rate was about ten percent over the last ten years. Although prices have gone up and down, overall, prices have gone up about ten percent. Our toll charges for the tunnels, especially for C H T, uh they have not been adjusted since nineteen ninety-nine for the C H T. Many of you pointed out that for the C H T, it is the most exped- uh convenient, uh uh it's best, it's really located and and as a result, it had attracted the most number of drivers using that tunnel. In order to address the congestion in that tunnel, we must divert some of the vehicles using the tunnel elsewhere. And this is uh uh our proposal to of diverting traffic away from C H T. Our objective is that the queues waiting to use the C H T should be reduced so that it will not affect non-cross harbor traffic. In other words, the queues uh waiting to use the C H T during rush hours, the waiting time, I think that they did it for the C H T, the peak hour is more than ten hours. We want to ensure that the queues will not affect the the non-harbor crossing traffic. We're talking about the the length of the queue and not the number of vehicles. If the, our objective is to shorten the length of the queue by forty percent. Of the three options, be they options A, B, or C, the the effect basically can help cut down the the that queue by thirty to forty percent. So that it will not affect the non-cross harbor traffic. We know that we cannot completely eliminate the the queue uh in the light of present circumstances. We can only uh if we can, you know, it will not, if the we, there's no longer any uh delay for the non-cross harbor tunnel, it will already bring about an overall su- improvement. Some people ask why for the W H C, we're not considering a toll. Well, in in fact, we've actually considered the W H C in both the last report and the present report. We pointed out that the problem with it, what is, what is the basic problem with the W H C? We understand that uh the W H C is not playing a very effective role in helping divert traffic from the little tunnels. But there is a major constraint. The exit of the W H C uh the Hong Kong side during rush hours uh already uh is already such that it exceeded the the capacity of the, of the connecting roads. If we were to attract more traffic to the W H C, the queues will very soon, you know, pile up near the entrance of the uh, of the entrance to the tunnel and causing more congestion for Central. For the Cent- before the Central when when try bypasses completed by twenty seventeen, attracting, uh diverting more traffic to the W H C is tantamount to uh adding more to the pressure or 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 for uh in that area. So before twenty seventeen, the W H C doesn't have, the cannot really help very much. But it does mean that we have no ideas as to what we should do after twenty seventeen. The present proposals that we put forward, uh in the, in these proposals, we emphasize that you'll give us the opportunity to give it a trial, give it a, to do a trial for, for a year. Uh there are two important aspects here, that is by adjusting the tolls and by leveraging on the discrepancy in fares, we can redistribute the traffic flow. And if it works, it will can, it will, will be useful reference for us in how we should deal with the W H C. Secondly, uh there is also the question of reimbursement subsidy. If the public accepts, and I mean the majority of the taxpayers, if they accept, government using public funds to subsidize uh the tunnel, uh yeah, uh the users of the tunnel and not the tunnel companies. And if this is accepted, acceptable, then uh this would be be useful consideration as to how we should, you know, you know, deal with the three tunnels after twenty seventeen. We're not saying that this is the uh the only and final solution, increasing the tolls for C H T and lowering the D E, the tolls for E X T as a long-term solution. We are provide, proposing, you know, a basis for us to to do a pilot, so that in future, we'll we'll be able to have useful reference. And that is the 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 reason for the present proposal. Many of you pointed out that we should adopt a longer perspective. Again, we are also working along the direction, say, for example, the proposal to shift the central business district area to other areas. And this is exactly uh why we are now uh developing East Cow Lun and also that the business activities on both sides of Victoria Harbour will be extended outwards. And this is one of the major reasons for our developing Eastern Cow Lun regarding the the linked roads or connecting roads. We're now building the Central I, when try bypass and soon, we will be uh building the trunk row for East Cow Lun. And this trunk row will uh for, for the eastern and western part of Cow Lun, there will be better linkage. So that for, it will be easier for us to divert the vehicular traffic in future. In the long term, uh it can, it can help us rationalize the situation. What we want to say is that the present arrangement is really a major step forward. If we don't do anything, the current congestion will simply further deteriorate. If we use this opportunity before twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen to 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 come up with some results uh through this trial or pilot, it can help us uh find a better and more long-term solution. I also like to explain a few more points. It was mentioned that if we were to propose a standardized charge or if we, there's, if we reduce the toll drastically for a standardized pole, I believe what you have in mind is not standardizing toll at a high level. I'm not, you, I don't think you're suggesting that. For a standardized pole, you probably have a lower toll level in mind. And such a lower toll would induce more people who originally would not drive private cars or other vehicles or or people who uh they will be encouraged to use uh the tunnel and creating uh more demand. So, so how can we make the toll more reasonable? The propose, the the consultant is proposing that the the more congested tunnel, we should increase the toll and that is more reasonable. And a simple, you know, it's basic economics. But if we are going to in- increase the toll at the same time for both tunnels, then uh they're, it it would create, you know, add to the pressure of the pa- patrons of the tunnels uh uh in terms of affordability. So we are trying to strike a delicate balance here. We need to balance the supply and demand and the patronage. We need to uh balance among the interests of different users. If uh the toll for Yixi is low by too much, then it will be under more pressure and 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 it will become oversaturated. So what we're now proposing is the right balance. All these calculations that we've done is not a simple arithmetic. Uh our consultants and our T D colleagues have made use of our uh we have used a lot of public data and and traffic simulation models uh uh before we arrived at these figures. Chairman, perhaps I will now, uh I've made a global response to all the concerns raised so far and I'll be willing to listen uh to further views and also answer members' questions. Several members already put up their hands. Mr. Tang Kao Pu, Mr. Lan Kao Hong, Mr. Fan Kao Wei. Anyone else? Well, four minutes each. Mr. Tang.
Thank you, Chairman. I really appreciate the deputations for coming uh collecting these additional data, which are not uh given by the consultant. Uh the Public Transport Association told us that for the last ten years, W H C has been increasing its fares all the time, but the traffic flow has also continued to go up. So the deputations have raised two issues. First of all, how do you ensure that option C, if you adopt the option C, how can you ensure that drivers who originally use the C H T will spend more fuel, yeah, more on fuel in order to use the E X T? And even if that works, how can you ensure that the tra- the C H T, where the congestion is being relieved, you are, and as a result, as a result of that, you will not encourage people who originally use the W H C to use the C H T instead? So there is a chain reaction here. So if you only focus on diverting traffic between the two tunnels without mentioning W H C will not work. Secondly, uh it has to do with your attitude. If the policy bureau now cannot tell us how it will cope with the problem relating to the uh W H C, not to mention this year, talking about twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, if you can't do that, it won't work. And secondly, the undersecretary made a very important point just now, that is for option C. We uh give, let you give it a try for a year, after which you will need to conduct further analysis. After you've given, got, given it a trial for a year, will you readjust the toll to the current level? Or will, uh is it really, is it, or rather, is it only a phony study? But what, and that your re-intention is to increase tolls? Uh Chairman, if I may again uh uh respond to Mr. Tang's point.
I think the key of the issues raised by Mr. Tang is that after, is what happened to traffic flow after this option is implemented? Of course, we cannot say for hundred percent or order how drivers are to drive the vehicles or choose the tunnel uh to use. But according to our study, we can anticipate the response of traffic distribution. That is as set out in the paper. Every day, around four thousand vehicles will be diverted to H C so that the traffic queue at C H T could be reduced by thirty to forty percent. This is the uh result of the study. But how can you prevent the um users of W H C to go to C H T? Well, this is already the result, that is to say, this is the net result. There might be flows to different tunnels, but the net result is that there'll be four thousand vehicles being diverted from C H T to E H C. That is the situation. There could be some um traffic flows, I can give you more details. This is the result that we anticipate, of course. This is all based on calculations. We need to uh look at the actual situation, that's why we're asking for a one-year pilot scheme. After running it for one year, we may have a basis to gauge the response as to how uh the scheme can be refined or how it can be formally implemented or how it can be further adjusted. This serves as an important reference as to how these three tunnels are to be dealt with after twenty seventeen. On this basis, we think that by then, the H C would go back to the government and by then, when we negotiate with W H C on this basis, we think that uh we can have, we might be in a better position. All right, Mr. Gary Fan.
Thank you. Uh I'd like to thank the deputations, twenty odd deputations, for coming here to express your concerns on the the transport issue and on how the longstanding traffic congestion problem should be addressed. Now, five to six deputations just now reluctantly said that they would accept option C. And the option C is more acceptable after the con- the round of consultation in twenty ten. And option C is more acceptable after the round of consultation in 2010. I have been consulting the commercial drivers and groups in community. Their concern is not about the step that the government is taking, but that is taken too late with few options put on the table. Then in the past, there were nine options. Now we only have three. But the principle is that if there is no standard management, and Undersecretary, I'm not just talking about standard tolls of the three tunnels. If we don't buy back the tunnels and adjust the tolls for standardized management, then the effectiveness is questionable. Now, all the views about building the fourth tunnel, buying back Western Harbour Crossing and how the management of the three tunnels could be standardized. I think this is the mainstream view. So Undersecretary should explain more about that. Is it that before the completion of the connecting roads in 2017, the government would not consider buying back WHC? Because the public opinion is that we cannot wait any longer. Even after 2016, when you get back EHC, you still have WHC. And Undersecretary, you should really target the source of the problem. You should take a bigger step. You should have vision in managing the three tunnels so as to relieve traffic congestion and redistribute traffic among the tunnels and to lower the costs of our commercial drivers, Undersecretary.
Chairman, I understand the viewpoint of Mr. Fan, but I also need to point out that buying back the tunnel from the company so that the government has control over toll levels, that's one thing. But traffic distribution to be improved by adjusting the tolls of the three tunnels, that's another matter. So for this proposal, we need to try out the effect on traffic distribution after toll adjustments and how public perceives it and what's the effectiveness because public money is involved. It's more difficult to take a bigger step if we can't even roll out the pilot scheme. So we need to roll this out first. I understand Mr. Fan's concern. If we need to wait for 2023 before we deal with the issue, it will be too late. Well, we do not plan to wait till 2023 before coming up with the comprehensive plan. The point is, we need to have a plan before 2023 to be run on a pilot basis so that we get data. And we need to learn about the effect of subsidizing tunnels with public money. But it's not the first time we subsidized the tunnel companies. We, the sector has also submitted some data. But we have opportunities. There is opportunity cost involved. Further delay would cause increase in the cost of the sector. Well, this is about subsidizing tunnel users. There is a misconception that we are subsidizing tunnel companies. There is a difference here. Mr. Ngong Sing, thank you, Chairman.
Having heard the deputations and members, I think it's not easy to opt for just whatever option in order to resolve the issue of traffic congestion at the tunnels. The reason is that we are in such a crowded place and at both ends of the tunnel, we see traffic congestion. And on public buses using tunnels, I think the administration should think more about it. Last time I raised this point to the Secretary, I said, as mass transport, the administration should consider traffic distribution at both, on both sides. That is to say, after exiting the CHT, whether traffic could be diverted on both sides. And therefore, on both ends of CHT, there should be, something should be done. For example, there should be an interchange platform each on Hong Kong and Cowloon side, say, for bus passengers to change to, say, minivan or 16-seat or 26-seat minibuses to go in, to go to different directions. Because one bus will, one minibus would be equivalent to two or three private cars. And after leaving the, after crossing the harbour, we see that on the Hong Kong side, traffic congestion is very serious. So we need to consider whether it's necessary to divert the traffic. For example, on reaching Central, whether there are other traffic diversion arrangements possible instead of relying on one single bridge. The administration should keep an open mind on these proposals. This matter cannot be addressed simply by adjusting the tolls. The administration should do more. These are my suggestions. I see if the administration would like to respond, Undersecretary.
Thank you, Mr. Leng, Mr. Ngong for your suggestions. On interchange, we will think about that. But many members have pointed this out. And that is whether the administration could build another tunnel. Now, in the longer term, we'll definitely contemplate this idea. But in the short to medium term, the major obstacle in identifying the site for the fourth tunnel is this. I can show you some slides. In the 90s, there was a proposal of reclaiming land along the harbour front so that more sites could be available for harbour crossing construction. But after the Harbour Protection Ordinance came into effect, it became very difficult for us to identify site for this purpose. And we are not permitted to reclaim land. And you can see on this slide, the yellow part, these are protected under the ordinance. Now, the problem doesn't lie with the tunnel construction. It lies with finding sites for connecting the tunnel to the ground on both sides. And when there are voices asking for more public space and a connected waterfront, this is a mainstream view rather than building more connecting roads. And whether we want to build a new tunnel or tunnel exits or new interchange, public transport interchange, we're facing difficulties in terms of identifying sites along the waterfront. This is not something that can be achieved in the short to medium term. So with limited room, we try to resolve the problem by adjusting the tolls. Mr. Frankie Yik.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, deputations, for coming to this meeting to express their views. Many of them are representatives from my sector. Secretary and this secretary have all along urged the public to accept the government's proposal for this toll adjustment proposal to be tested. And some from the sector already said that they would like to spend money to buy time. But I think there is a problem in this scheme. Now, we should wait for the completion of Central Wan Chai Bypass in 2017 before the trial is conducted. And I am talking about the trial on diverting traffic between CHT and WHC. Because CHT and EHC are quite far away. It has quite an impact on our logistics industry. Now, because of toll adjustments, some commercial vehicles might be diverted to EHC. But despite the lower tolls, the cost might remain the same. The, for traffic using CHT, the tolls are increased and the costs are increased and the trip, the trip may take longer. So the cost might remain the same. So we do have reservations as to the effectiveness of the scheme. And the sector is facing a huge problem in terms of manpower and a lower or fewer business orders because of external, poor external economic situations. So we are bound to lose. And I'd like the administration to think about this. After commissioning of the Central Wan Chai Bypass in 2017, we should look at the traffic distribution among the CHT and WHC. By then, the EHC would have gone back to the government. And CHT and EHC to the government don't incur any costs. And the repair and maintenance annually amounts to around $100 million, according to my calculation. So whether we buy back the WHC or not, or we offer subsidy or not, we still have room. It's not a business-government collusion. We need to think about the whole social costs. We need to think about the health costs in relation to air pollution when we think about traffic redistribution. I hope the government will think about it.
Secretary, I'd like to thank Yik for that comment. When we work on the present proposal, we emphasize that this is a short-term proposal that we will, it will only be a small step we take before 2017. Mr. Yik made some comments regarding what we should do in 2017 that was very useful reference. So we're now proposing a trial period. According to consultants, I think for the transportation industry, option A, B, C will benefit them in economic terms. Obviously, option C will benefit them the most. According to our calculations for the trucks, the overall economic efficiency is, will be in terms of $140 million. We think that the trial, that is why it's worthwhile for us to proceed with this pilot.
Mr. Kwok Ka Kei. Dr. Kwok. First of all, I'd like to thank all the deputations for coming here and giving us the valuable views. I'm sure the government has heard their views. And I have two questions. First of all, regarding the redistribution of traffic among the tunnels. On more than one of, for the WHC, although going from Cowloon to Hong Kong Island and because the Central Wan Chai Bypass is not completed, there is, there are some problems. But traveling from Hong Kong Island to Cowloon, the connection roads are already quite good and there is no obstruction linking up the Western Harbour Crossing to Lenter Island and NT West. Just because, in order to relieve the traffic congestion in Hong Kong Island, if you want to redistribute traffic and encourage people to use, to cross the harbour, you know, using the WHC, I mean, is there any way you can, you know, you can conduct a study? Increasing the toll for 6G and reducing the toll for EXT wouldn't work. The EXT is only, nearing its full capacity by about 800, 8,000-odd vehicles per day. I think adopting your proposal would divert traffic from 6G to EXT and traffic will become more congested in Hong Kong Island East. When you consider the redistribution proposal, shouldn't you at least consider making use of the connecting roads on Cowloon side to encourage people to use the WHC? I'll answer one question and the consultant explained to Mr. Kwok, you know, about his proposal. Let me explain that Mr. Kwok is worried that adopting our proposing, the EXT will be more, even more congested. In our proposal, you can see that this redistribution would mean more traffic for the EXT. But the EXC can cater to 78,000 vehicles per day. Right now, it's about 70,000 per day. If 5,000 more vehicles used at EXC is yet to reach full capacity. In the 1990s, the traffic flow was almost more than 80,000 per day. The proposal to cut down the tolls for EXT will increase its traffic flow, but it would not result in the length of the queue affecting the non-cross harbour traffic, which we're striking to get a delicate balance here. So according to our figures, it shows that we're able to resolve this problem. And I'll ask our consultant to answer Dr. Kwok's first question. Mr. Clark.
Hello, yeah. The question about reducing tolls in the northbound direction through Western Harbour Crossing. The problem is, there is a problem in the connecting roads, but it's quite remote from the tunnel, so you don't really associate it. It would be the westbound traffic in Central itself, in the Pedestrian Area and the merging up onto Connaught Road Elevated. So there is congestion associated with northbound Western Harbour Crossing, but you don't see it because it's so far from the tunnel. Is that clear?
Chairman, I think this is really not acceptable. Shouldn't the government, you know, resolve the problem of connection to the entrance and exit of WHC? You're now coming up with the excuse that if we adopt this proposal, it will cause congestion at the entrance of WHC. It's not being, the government's not being responsible because it's not done anything to relieve congestion regarding the WHC. And as a result, whether people who need to travel through the 6G, and now you are taking this opportunity to increase the toll. And I think this will not be acceptable to the majority of the public. Mr. Yao. Let me respond to that. Many deputations have pointed out that there are some problems with the design of a road system. With this slide, let me explain that the original design for the connecting road to WHC is the Central Wan Chai Bypass. But we had the litigation regarding reclamation. As a result, the commissioning date has been delayed from 2010 to 2017. Originally, vehicles using the WHC, if we have that bypass, some of the cars traveling in Central can be used of that bypass to go to Wan Chai and the Eastern District. So originally, we've taken it into consideration. However, there are certain factors we're not entirely within our control. And that's why we have the present bottleneck. To tackle this bottleneck now, we have to wait until that bypass is completed before we can have an improvement. Chairman Pun. Chairman, all the proposals of increasing the tolls for 6G and cutting down the toll for the EXC will not, you know, tackle the root of the problem. The best solution is the buyback option so that we can have standardized toll for the three tunnels or only minor differentials. So that, a second-best option is to cut down on the tolls for EXT while the tolls for 6G remain the same. By leveraging on the $5 differential, we can equalize the patronage for both tunnels or divert some of the cars to the Eastern District. However, if the queue outside, for outside the 6G becomes shorter, can you estimate how many, how much, how many cars will be diverted from, people who originally use the WHC will be diverted to use the 6G? And right now, you're proposing to increase tolls for 6G and cut down the toll for EXT. You are, in a way, forcing traffic to go to the EXT. And cars normally using the 6G, if they need to use the 6G, the trip is quite long. So is the $5 differential that attractive? I mean, it doesn't even compensate for the additional fuel costs. So will it really be really that effective? Chairman, I asked colleagues from TD to answer the two questions raised by Chairman, I asked colleagues from TD to answer the two questions raised by Mr. Chen. First of all, cutting down the toll for EXT and letting the CHT's cross harbour tunnel toll remain the same. Thank you. Our purpose is to divert the marginal users from CHT to the EXT. What do you mean by these marginal users? They are, that is based on the present charging regime. We're talking about drivers who can opt to use either CHT or EXT, but they opt, they're inclined to use the CHT. So, with the proposal to increase the tolls for CHT and cutting the EXT toll, these marginal users will have the incentive to use the EXT. For example, people traveling from Kowloon Bay to Wan Chai. With this proposal, they were more inclined to opt to use the EXT. If you take consideration the toll, the fuel charge, and the time saved, then for these marginal users, it can help them save money. I also like to go back to that slide to explain why lowering the toll for CHT while letting the CHT toll remain the same simply wouldn't work. Just now, the undersecretary explained that we're striking delicate balance here. We want to divert some of the vehicle flow from CHT to the EXT. But we also need to be concerned that the EXT cannot sustain, you know, too much additional vehicles. Otherwise, it will also become congested. For example, for private cars, if you cut down the tolls by ten dollars and the other tolls for other cars will be cut down proportionally while the tolls for the CHT remain the same, what will be the consequence? For the CHT, according to our consultants, five thousand nine hundred car vehicles will be diverted to the EXT. At the same time, because CHT tolls for EXT is now cheaper, there will be new vehicles using the EXT, two thousand nine hundred. In other words, eight thousand eight hundred additional vehicles will use the EXT. Traveling from Kowloon to Hong Kong Island, that would already mean that the turnaround at Tsuen Kuen Road will be oversaturated. There will be congestion there. For the CHT, because the tolls for CHT will not be increased, four thousand odd vehicles will change from using the WHC to the CHT. So, the number of vehicles using CHT will go down by one thousand three hundred. Mr. Lee Che Yan. Thank you. Well, I think these proposals simply work because of those two words used, we had just now. The word marginal in Chinese. What, all these proposals have come where you are only focusing on the so-called marginal users. And I don't think we should focus on the marginal. We should, you know, start the game anew. That is, for the professional drivers, they need to make a living and they really have to use the cross harbour tunnel. So, I think, in our opinion, the solution should be that you must cut down the tolls for the WHC. And I don't mind if you don't cut the tolls for private cars, because they can afford it. They can afford very expensive tolls using WHC. But if you really want to, you know, tackle this congestion, you have to ask the WHC to cut down tolls for professional drivers. The best solution is that you shouldn't just, you know, you know, do something about the tolls for the three tunnels. You should actually also ask the Tai Lam Tunnel to provide concession for people using the Line Rock Tunnel and then going through the CHT. There's no need for any concession for people using the EXT and then going through the Tai Lam Tunnel. I think you should end up with more or less a similar package for people using the three routes. And then there will be incentive for more people to use the WHT. You say there will be congestion because of that, but the WHC will not be congested throughout the day. There may be congestion during the morning rush hour. It's not even congested in the afternoon rush hour. So, during the morning peak hour, you can scrap the concession. For the rest of the time, you can offer concession to the professional drivers. In that way, you would be able to rationalize the traffic among the three tunnels. Don't focus on the marginal, start the game anew. For private vehicles, I think people shouldn't drive private cars that often anyway if we want to improve the overall air quality. I think for private vehicle owners, I don't think we should encourage so many private vehicles using tunnels. I think we should encourage more park and ride so that private car drivers will not drive the car across the harbour. And in the end, we may need to consider electronic road pricing, not for professional cars, but private cars. Why is it all the rich people need to have the cars, you know, gathering in Central? I think, there shouldn't be so many private cars anyway. That's, I think that's the only solution. So, would you focus only on the professional drivers? We, you know, come up with a new arrangement for all three tunnels so that there will be incentive for people to cross the harbour through the WHT? Chairman, when we talk about the vehicle flow, we're not just talking about lorries and professional drivers or business vehicles. In our proposal, we believe that in the short term, by adjusting the marginal use of the tunnel, it would help redistribute the traffic. It can help us, you know, to experiment with two things. That is true, adjusting tolls, we can redistribute the traffic. And secondly, it can help us find out how the public, whether the public accepts our using taxpayers' money to subsidize the users. Mr. Lee said that we should, you know, link up all the three tunnels. While I agree with the logic, but our connecting roads have yet to be completed. The Central Wan Chai Bypass is not yet built. We still don't have the Central Kowloon Trunk Road yet. If all these facilities were completed for the three cross harbour tunnels and the two major trunk roads along both sides of Victoria Harbour, then at that time, we would be able to consider what Mr. Lee Che Yan suggested earlier. I think all the deputations have asked the questions and it's now time for us to adjourn. So, once again, I'd like to thank all the individuals and deputations for coming here today. Thank you very much, we are now adjourned.